Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. That was a mouthful. Great. So now, we will convene the City Council Study Session for today. Vice Mayor Glover won't be with us at this meeting. He'll be joining us later at our regular scheduled council meeting. The first item on the agenda is to review items for tonight's meeting, our regular council meeting. First items, Items 1 through 3C. Items 4A through 4C. Items 4D and 4E. Items 4F through 4H. On Items 4H, we've had an email requesting to pull the item off consent agenda, making sure those individuals will be here tonight. So we'll wait until they make that request and do that. And that's on the replacement helicopter for the Police Department. Items 4I and 4K. 4L through 5C. 5D through 5J. And 5K through 7A. And Items 8A and through 9. Okay. Looks like we've covered that consent agenda, which will be read by Mr. Steve Wright this evening, they tell me. That'll be a treat. Great. Item 2, 2A, is to hear presentation, discuss, and provide direction on drafting an ordinance to allow the Mesa Fire Department, Fire and Medical Department to cost-recover for some of the services and care provided by the department.
Mayor?
Yes?
Can I just make sure there's no questions from council about the second meeting, the special council meeting regarding the-
Oh, thank you.
-home rule? I just want to make sure if there's any questions-
I should double-check that.
...before we move on, so.
So no questions?
Some of there's not, but as-
That would be on our special meeting we'll hold at the end.
You're good. Thank you.
Appreciate that. Okay. Welcome, Chief.
Mayor, members of the council, it's a pleasure to be here today for you to discuss an issue that you've all been involved with, or several of you have been involved with for quite some time, and hopefully others of you will be here in the near future, having to do with the extension of the additional medical services that we provide within the community. As you know, we've been operating our TRV program, which we're more consistently beginning to call our Community Paramedicine Program, as well as our Community Care Program, which includes our nurse practitioner unit and our Behavioral Health Unit. Today with me is our Deputy Chief, Steve Ward, who has been working on this project for several years now, and of course Jackie is going to help us with the ordinance itself. So with that, I'll turn it over to Steve for his presentation.
Mayor, council, good evening. What I'd like to do right now is give council a very brief overview of our TRV, our Transitional Response Vehicle Program, and our Community Care Response Unit Program. So as you know, several years ago, we implemented the Transitional Response Vehicle Program in an effort to be more efficient with some of our responses for our low-acuity first-aid requests that we got through the 911 system. We've been very successful with that. We're very proud of our efforts on this. And really what it was, was we had a smaller response apparatus staffed with two individuals. One was a captain of paramedic, and the other was a firefighter. And we triaged these in the dispatch center, and we sent this unit to lower-acuity first-aid calls. And we were very successful at having these units respond to these calls, and it allowed our ALS units, our larger units, to be available more often in their areas for our ALS, our advanced life support and structural firefighting-type calls. So we're still operating that model at this point in time, and that is our Transitional Response Vehicle Program. We do have two of those, and we operate those at peak times. And we've done a lot of research to figure out when they would be the most efficient, and we put them in places in the city that they're doing a great job for us right now. And born out of that was our Community Care Response Units. And as Chief alluded to, we have two of those. One of them has a nurse practitioner along with one of our advanced life support captains. And that unit is also charged with responding to lower-acuity first-aid-type calls that come through the 911 system. And they have done an outstanding job of responding to those calls, and they're able to take care of those patients that don't necessarily need to go to an emergency department and refer them to a primary care physician. And we're keeping a lot of good stats on that, and we're finding out that they're doing a really wonderful, outstanding job.
Question for you, Chief.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember Luna.
How do you determine the levels of acuity? What is it you're looking for in terms of sick patient, and what do they demonstrate?
At this point, like we said, we do the priority dispatching system. So when the call comes in, the dispatchers and the call-takers and the dispatchers have a regular answer-and-question-type thing that they do, and it's a preset. And from there, they will decide what type of call to prioritize it at, and then we dispatch after that. And then the company officers are able to do a little bit more of that when they get on-scene, or they're able to attach themselves to other calls as they see, as they need to.
I think another important distinction here is, in the call screening process that Steve's relating to, what we're looking for basically are patients who we can predict with high probability will not need to be transported to a hospital and certainly do not have a life-threatening injury. So in that event, we can determine that we can send the TRV unit in lieu of a full-advanced life-support unit to deal with that patient. We do maintain contact with that patient to be sure that the conditions don't change on the scene. At any time there's any kind of question about the level of medical need there, we'll go ahead and upgrade to a full-advanced life-support response. So we've been very cautious, and we haven't had any issues with this in the last, well, going on five years now. So it's worked out well.
And to continue that with our behavioral unit, it's much the same, much the same thing. We're talking about patients that have no exacerbating medical conditions. We've been able to send our crisis counselor out and our paramedics out, and they're able to assess these patients and get them to appropriate behavioral care in a much quicker time than they would alternatively. And we've been very successful with that model also. We're very proud of the results of that model. And so those are the two iterations of the Community Care Response Units that we have right now. Chief?
Okay. Thank you, Steve. The purpose of our meeting today is basically to propose that you authorize us to introduce an ordinance that would allow us to provide some offsetting revenue where it was available through insurance coverage for some of the services that we provide. Case in point is, we have been approached by several private medical companies, including doctors, groups, that have asked us to begin to look into their patients post-surgical to be sure that they're not going to have a recurrence of an injury that would require admissions or a hospitalization. They see that in their best interest. Clearly, it is financially as well as patient care. We see that in our best interest in that we know that 25% of all the advanced life-support calls that we run on today are with patients who have been in the hospital within the last 30 days. So through our data collection and our work, which is primarily Steve's area, we've been able to determine that these are high-risk for recalls for us. And so we can kind of, there's some synergy here. We can kind of support the doctors, groups, and hospitals with their concerns, and we can avoid essentially a 911 response. And the whole issue of the seriousness of putting a big fire truck on the road for the Code 3 response for something that we could have avoided. And this is kind of, if you will, it's sort of the conceptual basis for a lot of the things that we're working on now, as well as in the future, is trying to look at ways to implement what we're calling an EMS prevention-type program. So to try to do some things before the issue becomes so acute that we have to respond red lights and sirens, and we can actually get out and help people where we have the ability to predict they're going to need us in advance. So with that, I'll turn it over to Jackie so she can fill in any of the blanks, or we can answer any questions for you.
Wonderful. Question, Councilmember Summers.
Chief, as you know, we don't run an ambulance company here. And the way that emergency medical services has historically collected its revenue is by having a certificate of necessity or certificate of need from the state to run an ambulance, and those ambulances are reimbursed for transportation. The state hasn't set up any system, nor has Medicare or Medicaid set up a system whereby our paramedics or infield providers are going to be reimbursed for the services they provide. So what mechanism are you hoping that we will establish to collect the revenue? How are we going to collect that revenue without a certificate of necessity? And are the insurance companies going to reimburse us, or are we going to have to collect revenue through doctor's offices? Is that going to work?
I'll go first.
There's about four questions, I apologize.
There are, and they're all, they're really good questions. The first situation that I mentioned where we would work with a doctor's group, that would be a straight-up contract with them for services. And that is specifically the type of service that this ordinance would support, at least allow us the opportunity to engage in this discussion, negotiate some sort of terms that were positive for both groups, and go forward. Other areas are, we would be able to bill insurance companies, private insurance companies, that is, for some of the services that we may provide in the future. We're still looking at those, and clearly we'll be coming to council for direction and through the City Manager's Office as we look at possible synergies in the future where we can, everybody can benefit, especially the patient in this regard. But we're not looking at this as a wholesale open to start charging for all of our services. So we're going to be very selective about this. And so, having said that, yes, there is the ability under this ordinance for us to collect from insurance companies that are not Medicare or Access. In other words, a private insurance provider. But we would know that in advance of the contract, and we would be able to signify that to you as we went through the process.
Follow-up, please.
If I may, since a significant portion of payers for medical services in Mason, for that matter, throughout the state, are Medicare and Medicaid, how are we going to end up collecting for those, from those entities as opposed to the private insurers? Are we going to be able to do that, or are we going to have to go, continue to go through the doctor's offices?
For that particular issue, in order for us to collect any sort of revenue from either Medicaid or Access, we need to be licensed by the state to do that. It turns out that the license that is required for that is also allows for a certificate of necessity for transport. We're working right now with our current provider. We're looking into various alternatives on how we could approach that in the future. But it becomes a very active sort of negotiation and consideration that we're going through right now. Haven't really determined exactly the approach we're going to take. That's a bridge yet to be crossed, and I think that we're going to need to do some more research on.
Okay. So with this coming forward, we can collect from the private insurers. Just to be clear, we can collect from private insurers, and we can enter into contracts for, I would assume, just flat fee from doctor's offices. But we're not going to be able to collect from all the insurers, particularly those who Medicare, Medic, Access, and those who pay under the Medicare/Medicaid umbrella.
Correct.
Mayor and Councilmember Summers, just to clarify, I think at this point, we may actually have the ability to do billing under Medicare. Medicaid, which is Access, is the issue where we are required to have the certificate of necessity.
Medicaid?
Medicaid.
Access.
Yeah.
Yeah. I just want to be clear, because it's, when you start saying Medicare, Medicaid-
Correct.
Everybody gets confused, so.
Medicare would be the federal.
So Medicare, we may have an avenue for collection, but Access, the state insurance-
Correct.
...is where, and they're a significant portion of TRV users are Access.
Yes, and we are, through the experience with the TRVs as well as the other community care units, we've been able to do research specific to Mesa and found that between 75 and 80% of our customers are covered under Medicaid or Access. So it is a significant load of tax, or not tax, of insurance provided by those two entities. So what we're talking about with this ordinance is really dealing with no more than the 20% of the patients that we would encounter.
And in the, I would just add, in the absence of that certificate of necessity, we do need to have the authority from the council via an ordinance to cost-recover for what is reasonably related to the service that we're providing, and that's why we're requesting that authority from you.
Okay. So what we'd be addressing, that is 20% of patients currently, better than none?
Yeah. So if I've got this right, and tell me if I'm missing a piece, we're already responding to these patients. We've been traditionally doing it Code 3, big trucks, lots of people. You've proposed a new, and we are doing, the new TRVs and these Community Care Response Units that are going to save the citizens money. And we're looking for the opportunity to now, through this ordinance, to be able to cost-recover where we haven't been able to in the past, to be able to cover some of those costs as we're going. So is that about it?
That's exactly correct, Mayor. Thank you for the summary.
Seems pretty innovative to me. And Councilmember Kavanaugh?
Thank you. Mayor, the Public Safety Committee reviewed this issue again last week, and we recommended bringing it to the council with a recommendation to move forward with the ordinance.
Okay. Thank you. Other questions? Councilmember Richens.
How is this not the first step to establishing our, how is this different from establishing the first steps towards creating our own ambulance service?
This ordinance really has absolutely nothing to do with providing emergency transportation. The entire amount of fees paid for emergency transportation are paid through the CofM license, which we do not hold. So it really has no bearing on that. This is for basically everything other than that.
Well, in order to bill certain groups of patients, and you have to get a certificate of need for that, I mean, what's, is that the first step? I mean, is that what you would need to transport?
If we were doing emergency transport, under state law, we would need to get a certificate of necessity. That's correct. What this program is, is the non-emergency, if you will, not even transport, just the care provided.
Okay.
Transport is the key word.
Okay. Is it emergency and non-emergency? Is that-
Just-
Transport.
Think about transport. That's how they get reimbursed. The certificate of necessity is related to transporting.
Right.
We're not transporting.
Okay.
They're going to the home or-
Correct.
I'm not sure where, and providing a follow-up, but they're not transporting.
So somebody needs to leave at that point, then? An ambulance gets dispatched and somebody had-
Transported to the hot, yes.
Thank you.
Well, just to be clear, though, in a CON, I mean, the current model set up since the 1970s, and why we have a CON, is that the ambulance provides service. It bills, it is a mechanism to bill. And right now, the only thing we get reimbursed for are costs related to the transportation. There's some other ALS costs in there, but not to get too confusing. So even if we are not doing emergency transport, in order to set up the billing, would we not need, at some point, if we want to continue to explore this model and be innovative, even though we're not doing emergency transports, wouldn't we need to set up a CON at some point in order to establish the mechanism to receive some of that billing?
You know, as I mentioned earlier, this, we're, we're in territory that's uncharted. It has not been tested. The statutes are not specifically in place to allow for something like this. However, many times, they're not in place to disallow it either. So we're looking at alternatives on how to go forward on this in such a way that it suits the needs of Mesa and allows us to do the kinds of things that we think we need to do to provide service to our citizens.
We're kind of handcuffed by a state system that, and that, and the fact that this is a, the mayor's state, is a very innovative program, so.
So Mayor, council, let's be careful not to blend what's happened, the level or the types of services provided today with what's being proposed, as I understand it, by the chief. So the service that the chief is providing, or proposing to employ doesn't even exist today in any model. So trying to, and I just want to be careful, because I don't want to get caught in kind of a dilemma with our current provider, but the fact is, we're providing a service, neither we are doing this today, nor are they. And so there's really, this is kind of a whole new frontier. And it doesn't, so it doesn't necessarily interrupt directly the relationship today that exists between what the City of Mesa does and what our emergency transport provider does. Because this is going outside of that emergency call. This isn't being prompted by a 911 call. This is a follow-up call-
That's correct.
...that a medical provider's asked us to provide, making sure someone's taking their medications, they're getting, they're doing all the follow-ups. So it's a preventative program from ever, hopefully, getting into a situation where emergency would exist. So I think we want to be clear, we're creating kind of a separate program, completely different than any level of service being provided today.
Correct.
And so with that, though, there is the opportunity, because by providing the service for the insurance companies, the hospitals, is a lot cheaper to provide, this kind of goes by a conversation we had last time we met, preventative care and follow-up than it would be provided for the acute care, whether it's an emergency call or something like that down the road. Is that fair?
That's correct. Yes.
Right. But the question is, what tool do you use? I mean, whether you do emergency transport or not, Phoenix Fire does transport, Mesa does not. But to collect revenue, that tool may be the same whether you decide to do emergency transport or not.
The billing. Billing? Is that what you're asking?
You have to bill. In order to bill, you have to be able to collect, and do we need the CON in order to collect from-
Not for this-
From the insurance company.
Not for this service?
Not for this particular service, but others maybe.
All right.
Something to look out for in the future.
Yeah.
Because it's, we're still going to, even with this, we're going to be limited in what we can do.
Correct.
Right.
So I guess my point, just to punctuate it, is the state rules and how we collect, as well as Medicare/Medicate, even though this is a great step forward in leading to innovation, the rules, the lack of a CON, the lack of ability to bill is stifling the innovation and some of the steps that we could be using this program for in the future. And I think, not only do we need to do this, but we need to think about how we set ourselves up for success in the future. For the TRV program, there's practitioner, not what you were referring to, or Councilmember Richens was referring to necessarily.
Mayor, if I may, just another, just brief point for clarification, is everything that we have done to this point and everything we're planning to do is, directly affects the quality of care for the people in the City of Mesa. The revenue aspect of this is just being a smart manager. If there's an opportunity to generate some revenue that could offset some of the costs of this, we would be amiss if we didn't pursue this. But having said that, the focus of what we're trying to do here is really to adjust to what's going on in the medical care industry, and rather than being the safety net that's burdened and worn out and about to break because we didn't respond in a proactive way, we're taking a proactive approach, again, to help the patient, either not go through some of the pain and suffering, or some of the issues they're going through, or get them to the appropriate care before a 911 call goes out. So it's really, it's, the finances come into play because I think it's a responsible thing to do, but our primary mission here is to make sure that our citizens have the best service available.
Yeah. Other questions? Okay, good. So looking for direction, council supportive then to proceed and develop an ordinance? Good? Okay. Good, then. Please proceed. We'll look forward to seeing that ordinance fairly rapid-manner, I presume, hopefully.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Next item. Hear a presentation, discuss, and update from the I-Mesa Steering Committee. Do we have folks here with us this afternoon? Wonderful.
Hello.
Hi.
If you got which seat here. I'm Elizabeth Danielson, and I'm currently the Chair of the I-Mesa Committee. So thank you for letting us come, and I'm particularly thankful to see Congresswoman Benelli here, who used to be on our committee before you took her away from us.
She's getting a promotion.
I'd also like to say that Kay Henry, who is another member of the committee, is here as well.
Wonderful. And she's welcome to come up if she'd like, please.
If you'd like to join me, please.
Kay, come on up.
So as most of you know, the I-Mesa program, do I need to start this, or does somebody else do that? Huh?
We'll get some technical assistance for you.
Slideshow, I just lost it. Hello. So the I-Mesa group, as you know, is a citizens' initiative, and the task of the- He was supposed to page down. Okay. Okay. The task of I-Mesa really is to collect and vet citizen ideas for the future and the improvement of the City of Mesa. And we have been in place for three years now, I believe. And our goal really is to transform the city and to give residents an opportunity to have a say in the future that they want in Mesa. So in the last, whoops, sorry, wrong direction.
I messed it up, too, I'm sure.
So when we went through the I-Mesa initiatives earlier, we took the ideas that had been submitted by citizens through the online project, where they can present, share ideas online, and we also had village meetings around the city and solicited ideas at that from them. And we took those ideas and grouped them into approximately seven different categories. As you see here, the categories were higher education, vibrant downtown, transportation networks, arts and cultural vibrant, vibrancy, a sustainable economy, livability, and recreational access. So through the first phase of I-Mesa, we narrowed our focus to three areas: vibrant downtown, transportation networks, and recreational access, since we figured we couldn't do everything at once. And so we launched our initiatives for those three to start with. And so I just want to review with you briefly what it is that we have either completed, what's in progress, or what we have planned for the future. So as you're well aware, one of the things that the I-Mesa Steering Committee and the citizens were very interested in was Parks and Recreation. And so we were involved in that Parks Bond that is currently being implemented. But some other things that we've been involved in are the expansion of the Riverview Park, Heat Sink Labs in downtown Mesa. The city provided them with some space and also some initiatives to get that going. One of the ideas that was put forward was for a microbrewery, and Desert Eagle Brewing Company did come in and open one of those. The Mesa Urban Garden was a major initiative of the I-Mesa project, and also ThinkSpot, which is now open in the Red Mountain branch of the library for some technology innovation. The Parks Bond projects have been the biggest piece, we think, of the I-Mesa project so far. And included in the ideas that we put forward were renovation and enhancement of Pioneer Park, of Riverview Park, the federal building, establishing a Mesa Aquatics Complex, Greenfield Park, urban fishing lake, and some existing park improvements. In addition, we're also looking at Buckhorn Baths, which was the number-one vote-getter for a while on the I-Mesa website, and also the Monterey Park and initiatives around developing a downtown urban plaza, which is also moving forward, I believe. Other issues have been bike and pedestrian paths, especially Riverview and Rio Salado, and also West Mesa Connectors and the Southeast Mesa Bike and Pedestrian Path Projects. So we're now into Mesa 2.0. What next? And so we have identified three additional areas as our focus for, as we're moving forward, and those are vibrant downtown, sustainable economy, and livability. So we have, we took the ideas that are still on the I-Mesa website, which is still functioning. People are still submitting ideas and having conversations there. And we met as the I-Mesa Steering Committee and discussed what ideas were currently in process, as well as what other ideas we thought would be appropriate in these three areas. And so these are just some initial ideas. We're not ready to go anywhere with these, other than just having some initial conversation. But in the area of vibrant downtown, one of the things that we've talked about is that downtown urban plaza, doing some mixed-use development, redeveloping old properties, and maybe thinking about a medical campus being located somewhere downtown that could also add to the vibrancy of our downtown. Sustainable economy, we think that's an important initiative for the future of the City of Mesa. And so we're wanting to think about how we encourage and support the establishment of incubators, how we attract and retain an educated population, what kind of highway incubators, how we attract and retain an educated population, what kind of high wage jobs we can bring in, especially in our transit corridors, and alternative transportation needs that would also be linked to our sustainable economy. And then livability, this is sort of citywide. What makes a city an attractive place to be? It is that sort of indefinable characteristic of livability. But we think Fiesta District is certainly a part of making Mesa revitalized, welcoming entrances to town on the freeways and other ways of coming into Mesa. Library expansions, we've talked about both physical space and also about other kinds of libraries such as a tool sharing library or other things where citizens could come and share materials that they have and that they need. So not just books and not just technology, but other ways of thinking about libraries. Neighborhood beautification is one and continuing with parks and recreation development. So that's sort of where we are at this point and we're now at the, ready to launch how we move forward and what we focus on next. And so we hope that we can count on the city council and the mayor's office to continue to support the I-Mesa projects and our initiatives. Some of the things we've talked about are how we celebrate ideas that have been completed, how we let citizens know that we have in fact listened and responded and implemented some of the things that came from the citizens. We also want to find ways to consider, continue seeking citizen input. We need to relaunch and revitalize our marketing and PR campaign so that people know that I-Mesa is still existing and how they can access it and continue to meet with council, staff, boards, committees. Our intent is not to work independently, but really to be idea generation that works with the existing mechanisms of the city. And then certainly presenting any of the things that we come up with on an ongoing basis to council. So I'm, we're open to any questions or comments that you have and any directions that you want to provide.
Wonderful. Questions? You covered it very nicely. I would say please take the opportunity to meet with individual council members, get some feedback and we appreciate all the hard work that you put into this I-Mesa and, you know, helping us to be a better community and communicating in a better manner. And so it's a lot of hard work. We realize that Mr. Schofield's here, he's worked hard and any others that might be on the committee, we appreciate the effort.
Sorry, Mark.
Yeah. And we realize all of your hard work and everything that you've done. So we appreciate the effort and really look forward to more success along these lines. So thank you.
Thank you.
Wonderful. Thanks. Okay. Our next item on the agenda is appointments to boards and committees. Do we have a motion?
Sure.
A motion by Councilmember Sanders, seconded by Vice Mayor Glover. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Okay. Acknowledged receipt of minutes in various boards and committees.
No knowledge.
We have it. Councilmember Summers, thank you. Seconded by Vice Mayor Glover. All in favor, please say aye. Aye? Any opposed? None? Okay. Here are reports on meetings or conferences attended. Anybody want to take some moments here? How are we doing on time? Probably, okay, probably move along then. Scheduling of meetings, Mr. Brady?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a reminder to council, we will not be holding a study session this Thursday. It's been canceled. So the next study session and meeting for the council will be on Thursday, June 26 at 7:30 a.m. Also a reminder that this Saturday, June 21, Councilmember Benelli will be hosting a neighborhood meet and greet at Sassy's Cafe and Bakery from 8:30 a.m. to 10 a.m. and that's at 2729 East Main Street.
Very popular restaurant. My wife tells me. So yeah, lots of folks going there. Okay, wonderful. Thank you, Mr. Brady. If there's no other information, then we'll, a motion for adjournment? Do we have a motion and second? All in favor, please say aye. Aye, we're adjourned.